Testing.
There we go. Wonderful. All right. We are on air, according to the sign. We'll go ahead and get started with the meeting of the regional transportation question.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for a public comment. This time is limited to comments on items that are on today's agenda. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone and provide your comments, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period, and we'll go back to Ms. Maynard.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item is to approve the agenda. It's in order and ready for your approval.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda for today's meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to receive your CEO report. So first, we would like to recognize Ricardo Burcher. He's a paratransit operator from our contractor, MV Transportation. And to present this item, we have a video with Deputy CEO Francis Julian.
Thank you, MJ. This month, we're celebrating an operator from MV Paratransit, Ricardo Burcher, or Rick. Rick is an awesome driver. With all the comments he gives us, when there's an issue with pickup or drop-off location, he actually communicates with us, which allows us to change some of the pickup and drop-off location for our client. Not only does that help our clients, it also helps his fellow drivers to better find customers. And most recently, Ricardo actually worked with maintenance and dispatch to make the process of pulling out the vehicles in the morning more efficient. So now, with the help of Ricardo, dispatchers know when the vehicles are clean, fueled, and ready to go. So let's go and celebrate Ricardo. Hi, Ricardo. Good. You remember me, Francis?
Yes. How are you? So nice to meet you. Do you know why I'm here? No.
You won the Crystal Bus, Ricardo, on behalf of MJ Maynard and the Board of Commissioners. Congratulations. Woo-hoo! This is for all the amazing comments you're sending for the pickup and drop-off location with the, to the RTC comment, what you did with Fleet Watch, helping the dispatchers. So honestly, from myself, all Paratransit staff, MV, Board of Commissioners, and MJ, please, please continue the awesome work you're doing. We appreciate it, and our clients appreciate it so much. Good. I hope you do. But you know what now? It's your turn to talk to the mic. Crystal Bus comes with the mic.
And I would like to thank RTC for this beautiful award in recognition of my service. And I'll have more work for you. I'll have more stuff to send you. We're going to take this a long way. Thank you.
He is. Yes. Congratulations. On Saturday, July 1st, the RTC will implement a transit service change intended to improve transit riders' experience by addressing delays due to more ridership and delays from road construction projects. Schedule updates will occur on 23 routes, and routing changes will occur on four routes. July 1st is also the start of RTC's contract with our new transit contractor, TransDev. We look forward to working with TransDev to help connect our passengers to work, school, family, essential services, and more. I'm also up to report that riders are now able to purchase single-ride fares on the ride RTC mobile app. This is another convenient option for passengers in the residential and resort markets, in addition to the multi-tier and multi-day passes that are already available on the app. Full details on the service change, including all updated schedules, can be found on our website at rtc-snv.com. Next, WCO Francis Julian, he's going to provide an update on transit safety and security. We have new commissioners. Last year, we presented to you, we did a peer review on the model of security systems at other transit agencies, and so we just want to provide an update particularly for those commissioners that were not here last year.
Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board, Francis Julian for the record. So as MJ mentioned, last October, we presented to the Board a peer review of the findings we've made for the models that other agencies in the U.S. are utilizing for safety and security. So basically, we looked at the three models of private security, just like we have Transit Police inter-local agreement with their own police department as well. So just as a re, whoops. My clicker's on. Okay, thank you. So just as a recap, this, we surveyed 33 agencies. So we saw quite different models in those agencies. The most popular one was a combination of private security and transit police, followed by private security and law enforcement, then transit police, and then systems that add, just like us, private security only. Next slide, please. Of those 23, we followed up with six bus-only agencies to examine their security models more in depth. These six agencies were chosen based on the fleet size, number of routes, and ridership that are really similar to our system as well. Out of the six agencies, we received five responses. The following slides will show what we found out. This graph basically summarized the number of responses we received regarding the type of security structure each agency has in place. We found some agencies around the U.S. that are very similar in size and demographics to ours. Out of five bus-only transit agencies, including the RTC, we found two had contracted security, two used local law enforcement, and one had a hybrid model, which uses a combination of security and transit police. As you can see, most agencies utilize these different models to address incidents that occurred throughout their system. We wanted to also take a look at what kind of deployment each agency had. So we here, we have Milwaukee County that have 47 contracted security out of 318 buses, Westchester County, New York, or Beeline, with three law enforcement dedicated to their system. AC Transit with 16 law enforcement dedicated to their service. Coda has 59, so that's in Ohio. And in San Antonio, they have 151 with a hybrid security and transit police at the RTC. And thanks to the, to the Board, we're actually adding 33 officers to bring our complement now to 247.
Yep. Go ahead.
Is there a way to determine if by increasing the number of officers or security, if it does in fact lower the crime rate?
Yes, so that's the KPI we follow on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. So what we're going to look at is the number of assaults. If they go down, we are looking at the numbers of removals to see them going up as well. So we actually can see if it moves the needle or not. So last time, the Board did increase the number of officers back last year in January. We actually saw a small decrease in the percentage of assaults versus the ridership, and we saw an increase in the number of removals that marksmen were able to do.
Okay, so we'll track that as we go along for the...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on Councilman Shaw's question, we've got the information here, which is really helpful in terms of number of officers versus number of buses. How do some of these other jurisdictions rate in terms of the, a number of assaults or incidences on their buses?
We, as I presented last, last month, we, throughout the agencies, and these are not, I'll come back with the precise numbers, but overall, in the U.S., we're seeing a 26% increase in assaults throughout transit agencies.
Okay, thanks. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The question on this, is this contracted with our transportation services? That we are asking, and where does that responsibility lie? Is it with the contracted transport? Or, I mean, I know the law, and where would legally lie, but how much of this is, when you ask these types of numbers and the relationships, the correlation, where does that responsibility lie? Especially with the new provider in now?
So it's a partnership in between us and the contractor to get the information, but obviously, for all the removals, it's, this is a part of the contractual agreement that we have with, with our contractor marksmen.
Yeah, Mayor, so the responsibility to provide security services is ours. And if you look at just the survey, the transit systems are responsible to either enter into an interlocal agreement with the local sheriff or police departments, or the transit service is responsible to create their own transit police department, or the transit system is responsible to hire a private security firm like we did with Marksmen.
And if I might continue, Mr. Chairman. In light of that, though, when you start looking at numbers and you're comparing with other cities, like cities, and we see the increase that may be caused by a variety of reasons, societal and legal, everything, there's so many effects on safety on our buses. Do you, is it your or our responsibility to say, these are the numbers, we want a security individual assigned to every route all day through the night, or, and that is contracted? So if they are not, the contract isn't doing it, that's a violation?
Yes, so we do dictate when, and obviously, we work with the contractor, but we do dictate with the times, routes, where we want the officer and the deployments. Obviously, we work with both fixed route and soon one fixed route contractor, the security contract, and our safety and security team to, to work on the deployment. And we're actually using data. So we're using all the incidents, the previous incidents that happened, to see where we have unfortunate trends, to try to mitigate those, those trends, and come up with strategies to minimize what we're seeing.
And apropos of the accident or the incident that happened in Chicago with the driver and the passenger, that is something in Nevada, here in southern Nevada, that is the responsibility of RTC and our...
Contractors as well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We, we heard a lot of comments of what our private security cannot do and can do. So here's basically a clip of the cards that were distributed to all contracted staff on what marksmen can do and cannot do. Although security officers do not have policing power, Nevada Revised Statute allows the security officers to detain a person that has committed a misdemeanor or felony, felony following Nevada Revised Statute for a citizen arrest. A security officer can make a citizen arrest on behalf of the RTC for an attempted or committed misdemeanor if, in the securities officer presence. So that's important, the security officer must be witness to the incident. The security, a security officer can issue a trespass warning as well. In addition, a person, if a person is not following posted RTC transit rule, a security officers can request them to leave the bus or the facility. As a reminder, last year, marksmen did over 118,000 removals from buses and terminals. Security officers can also conduct fair enforcement, confiscate counterfeit RTC passes, respond to emergency, provide first aid, assist operators and customers. What they can't do, they cannot exercise police power. They cannot forcefully remove passengers. They cannot trespass passengers from a moving vehicle, and they cannot detain a passenger when officers did not witness an incident. We, next slide, please. We certainly understand that security is a job that continues to be very difficult and dangerous. We will continue to work with all the contractors and our driver's security committee to identify measures we can take to make the transit system safer for our passengers and operators. This concludes my update, and I'd be more than happy to take further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Julian. Any other questions? Commissioner, Councilman Knutson.
What kind of insurance requirements do we put on our contractor? What kind of insurance requirements do we put on our contractor?
I will have to come back for the specifics, or maybe...
Yeah, it's, we can get a specific...
I'm just concerned if we get sued, they're the first line of defense. I'd like to know what their limits are.
You got it. So, yeah, they're all required, all of them, fixed, all of our contractors are required to carry insurance, and so, Greg, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilman. We, the insurance is a risk shift. The contractor will provide the limits to you so you can have it, and you're correct, they are the first line of defense for any type of action that's filed in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, thank you. Did you, Councilman Knutson?
Thank you, Chair. And this is, I don't expect to put you on the spot, I just wanted a general, high-level overview. What kind of training do the marksmen security get? And then the second question, have you mentioned KPIs a few different times in your presentation? Can you just provide like a, to get a high-level overview of what those KPIs are that we regularly monitor?
Yes. So the training for marksmen lasts two weeks. So there's classroom, there's on, in-field training as well. As part of, obviously, they have multiple facets in their training, from de-escalation obviously being one that is really a big focus. In terms of KPI, we track pretty much by category of incidents. We tally where and when they happen, as well as the location, so we're capable of doing heat maps. Obviously, time of day, the type of assaults, if a weapon was used or not, if it was verbal, when medical was requested, when metro was requested. And in all those cases, we always, once again, as I say, track time of day, the route, and we actually geofence where those incidents are happening, just to be more data-rich and make better future decisions.
All right, Councilman Rowe.
Oh, actually, I was going to defer to Mayor first, but, is that okay if I defer to Mayor first? Oh, okay, I guess, well, I would like to go with ladies first. Yeah, real fast, I'm, in one of my various jobs, as you guys probably don't know this, I used to be, besides being a teacher, before I was doing that, I was doing unarmed security, right? But I'll say that from the bit that I've talked to our marksmen guys, they're far better trained and far better equipped than I ever was, and I was working for a large security agency. So as I understand, the very, when they're called to action, the vast majority of these things are actually very low incident kind of, kind of thing, like removing people who are sleeping on a bus, who just won't respond to the driver, and that's when they get. So are the incidents, are these incidences and the number and all that, are they available for the public to view, so that, so they could actually, you know, look for themselves to see?
It's, obviously, it's public information, but we actually have some KPIs on our website. We're more than happy to see what we can add to those metrics.
I think it would help put, you know, I think it would help put the narrative into perspective for the, for the public. I'm not disputing the fact that there have been, I mean, we see these all the time, but those are, you know, those are the sensationalized ones, you know? Yeah, it was horrible, the one where the one lady pushed the elderly gentleman on the bus, he passed away. We're seeing other unprovoked attacks. We, I get it, you know? And overall, yeah, we've seen since the COVID hit that there's a certain attitude that's gone throughout our country. I totally get that. But just, you know, again, I feel that, and again, not to diminish anything, but I think it'd be good for, for the public to actually get a totality to, as to what the issue is, for them to be able to actually see the stats of what most of these things are. It could be something as simple as someone refused to pay, you know? And so we have to call our, our, our security guards in. Someone falls asleep on the bus, he's obviously drunk, you know, you can smell him, you know? You can smell the alcohol on them, right? And so our security forces are summoned for that. So if we, if we could somehow make that information more available to the public, I think that would actually help, you know, for people who actually do a little bit of research, it would help them, you know, also make an informed decision. I will say, you know, I've actually, I've actually built a relationship with some of our, some of our guys, because, you know, they run right in front of North Hollywood City Hall, and, you know, they work, our guys work in teams, you know, and I've actually bought stuff with them at Dutch Brothers, because, you know, that's, we have a Dutch Brothers in front of North Hollywood City Hall, and they're, you know, they ride the buses, you know? I see them out there, I've seen them in action, right? And I'm really happy that we're going to have more of them out there, which I think is good. And I think as the, as the Councilman said, and of course, that's exactly what I would expect an accountant, you know, to come up, no, yeah, he wants to see data. He's the expert to see data, and I'll be very interested to see, you know, what the, how this skews the numbers when it comes to especially higher incident kind of things. Because again, I say, are you kidding? I say that in, ever since I've come into public service, I really have come to appreciate good accounting. Well, I consider you an accountant, and I say that in the very best of terms. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, I just wanted to, as I mentioned previously, you know, I did speak personally with Sheriff McMahon to inquire about a potential interlocal agreement to bring on, you know, their, their resources. They are currently recruiting, working really hard to recruit more officers. Sheriff McMahon let me know they had about 300-plus officer shortage, but he certainly said to stay in contact with him, and that, you know, the plan that when they are fully staffed, their compendium is where it needs to be, that there's a potential opportunity for, for some future partnership.
Thank you, Ms. Maynard. And Francis, you good?
Yep. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the Board?
Please question.
Oh, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to get this. We have, it's very different in this city, the equipment here. Very quickly, the pilot program that was started to help transportation CCSD students in Spring Valley, is that being continued under the new contract? And where are we? Is it being expanded?
Yes, so we're actually meeting with CCSD next week, so this is an ongoing partnership we have with CCSD. And we're, each year, we're reevaluating the high school. The initial high schools, this is tremendous success, so obviously, they'll still be in the mix. So each year, we try to see what we can do better with, with those schools, but it's a really, really good program. And what we're seeing...
So it's a discounted, if you'd explain what it is, because I think the pilot program is a program that's already been in existence for years in New York City and other cities, I'm sure. But we have always at CCSD, we had 1,800 buses, the cost, the insurance, PERS, everything else, and certainly, RTC can do a better, less costly job. So if you would explain where we were with the Spring Valley.
Yeah, so there is now 18 high school in the program throughout the valley. So what we do is with CCSD, we identify where, where students live close by a transit line, where it's a direct line from where they live to the school, so no transfers. So they take, actually, instead of taking the yellow bus, they actually take the RTC. And what's actually wonderful, what we're seeing, because obviously, we can monitor what they're utilizing in their passes, is it, this is actually inculcating a transit culture. So those students are actually using our system to go to work on the weekend, to go to leisures, movie theaters, so on and so forth. So it is a tremendous program, and obviously, our...
And the cost, the cost to the student or parent?
So the CCSD bears the, pays basically their semester, the semester pass. So we actually created, created a semester pass, so they don't even have to, to get a monthly pass. So they've got one pass for the whole semester, and they can ride 24/7.
Great program.
It is. I think, I think to date, about, we've moved about 300,000 trips for the Clark County School District students, so we do appreciate the fact that they are riding more than just to school. All right, Chairman, so next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report, and this month, Deputy Director Darren Tedford will be doing that.
Good morning. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to present the NDOT Director's Report today. I'll have a handful of project updates go through. First, I-15 Tropicana update. Next week, we'll have two overnight closures of Tropicana diverging diamond interchange over I-15. The crews will refresh the striping and raise pavement markers, also make slight changes to the median and side barriers. We have several overnight closures of northbound I-15 this week as we install new automated traffic management gantries. It's not this week, it's next, but the first is scheduled for June 19th from 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 the following day. Our team continues to work with stakeholders in regard to planning for traffic control and for closures. Next, I-15 north widening. We're continuing a project to expand I-15 from two lanes to three in each direction between Speedway and the 93 interchange. Previously, it was announced that we planned to temporarily reduce I-15 to one lane for up to two miles between Apex and US 93 through December. After speaking with stakeholders and collaborating with our contractor, we were able to engineer a solution that will keep two lanes open in both directions at most times during days and weekends. Projects we're doing up on Summerlin Parkway, there's a pair of projects started in late February. These projects remain on schedule, and they're expected to wrap up by the first week of August. Crews have been doing mainline paving on Summerlin, as well as installing guardrail and working on improvements to the landscaping. In the coming weeks, drivers will see work happening on the ramps with ADA improvements and upgraded signals. Also, drivers soon will see new signage and upgraded lighting. I have a couple more updates that I don't have slides for, but first of all, the Henderson Interchange Project is a design-build project the department's working on. We are working on issuing the request for proposals in late August, and right now, we have three proposers that have submitted their qualifications. So that project is going well underway in terms of planning and obtaining a design builder for that project to move forward with construction. Last month, we updated on downtown access project. Status is the same, we're analyzing our options and with the intent of coming up with a preferred alternative in the fall. So that project is moving forward with analysis of the multiple options that we're looking at. We currently have a project for I-15 South between 215 and Sloan to do widening down there and other improvements. It's currently advertised, and we expect to open bids and award that project later in the summer. Status of our, of Bright Line, the grant application has been submitted to the FRA, Federal Rail Association, and the grant is under analysis, and we hope to hear back about that in August or September. And that's all the updates I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tedford. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of items 5 through 52, and can be taken in one motion.
All right, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item, it's Agenda Item 53, it's to ratify the emergency amendment number three to contract number 20-013, Security Services for Transit System and Facilities with Marksmen Security Corporation, in order to maintain existing security coverage by increasing contractual compensation to add additional staff and equipment to respond to the evolving security needs of the RTC, and to adjust the option year one not to exceed amount of $18,652,834.90.
All right. Is there any motion?
Motion approved.
All right, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 53. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman. Agenda Item 54 is to receive a presentation for the review of certain matters related to the July 1, 2023 increase in fuel taxes made under the provisions of Section 373.0663 of the Nevada Revised Statutes. And our, today, we have our Director of Finance, Sharon Gutierrez, he's going to go ahead and present that to you.
Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Chairman Jones, and members of the Board. NRS 373067 requires that before each statute or any required annual inflationary adjustment is made to the fuel tax rates in Clark County, the Regional Transportation Commission review at a public meeting the amount of the upcoming adjustment, the history of the past adjustments, and what has been done with the revenue collected. No vote is necessary. This is for information purposes only, as required by NRS. For calendar year 22, the producer price index was 18.7, as shown in the blue line over 22. The 10-year rolling average PPI is 4.1%, as shown in the green line over 22. FRI 1 had a 10 cents cap and was reached on July 1st of 2016. Starting 7/1/23, the FRI extension rate will be 10.2 cents, or about the 2.9 cents increase from 7/1 of 22. We are projecting FRI 1 revenue for FY '23 at $86 million, and budgeted FY '24 at $87 million. We are projecting FRI extension revenue for '23 at $37 million, and budgeted for '24 at $52 million, factoring in the rate increase from a previous slide. That concludes my prepared remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome in your former role.
Thank you.
Mayor Hardy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, how does that relate to the legislature and what we did or what we didn't do, or where we're going from here, because it hasn't gone away completely yet?
Good morning, Angela Castro, for the record. As you all have been briefed, and I will bring a full report to you back in July, Assembly Bill 325, which extended the fuel revenue indexing, or looked to extend the fuel revenue indexing program by the county, it was enabling legislation despite our attempt. We were, the governor vetoed the bill recently. So, with that, though, we do have the ability to go back in the 2025 legislative session, or, and, because it's in statute, we can do that, or we can go to the vote of the people in 2026. And so, there's still options out there, and we still have time. This still remains a priority for us, and we will be back to you with other suggestions as well.
Thank you. Ms. Castro? Councilman John?
How are we dealing with electric cars? And are we making any progress, or?
Throughout the session, there was bipartisan discussions about electric vehicles and a lot of interest. I will tell you that people understand that, you know, with the introduction of electric vehicles, it is going to take away from our infrastructure dollars. We are looking in close conversations of doing some type of stakeholder group, continuing those conversations, and trying to run legislation in the '25 session. There is a lot of interest and appetite to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Segalum?
Is it either/or as far as going to the vote of the people or going back to the legislature, or could we do both?
We can do both, and I believe industry has confirmed that they are interested in doing both.
Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I find both issues appalling. I cannot believe that without fuel revenue tax income for us, and who's supposed to go ahead? Do we all just go outside and take care of the roads ourselves? And without electric vehicle support and funding that's continuous, I just find it absolutely irresponsible and appalling that we have not been successful on both these issues. And you can't sit silently and not say anything, because we are the residents, we are the people that are going to find the roads, and we have enough trouble with the roads as they are, and the passion that we need to have. What, the funding that we currently have takes us through '24?
Through 2026.
Through '26.
Yep, and then we have to go either to the, we have to go to the vote of the people to extend the program.
And what's the cost to prepare for that? And is that cost in the hands of the RTC?
So, I'll have, so there's a good question. The indexing piece discontinues at the end of calendar year 2026. The pay-go money, it will still be available, but it will obviously, the ability to bond against a much smaller level will provide a lot less funding for roadway improvements and infrastructure. Sharon, anything you want to add?
So, the effectiveness of this one is seven, the last indexing, it's a 10-year annual indexing, it will be 7/1 of '26. And then, the impact of the next indexing will be affected, or it will impact the agency 7/1/27. So, this FRI-2 is shared between RTC, the state, and Clark County. So, it's not just RTC that benefits, it's also Clark County and the state.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Knutson?
The concern with this, and why we really got to lobby hard, is that this not only affects our revenue, but it affects our bonding ability. And, and that's what we rely on to fix these roads and everything else. And if we can't bond, we've got several things working against us. One, if the revenue goes down, that, that affects us. But two, interest rates are rising, so we've got to counteract that in some fashion with the legislature, or we're not going to be able to bond, and we're not going to be able to do anything.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Knutson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to echo the comments up here. I've said it privately for several years now. I think it's important for us to be very, very aggressive in making sure that our community understands what the impacts of, of the FRI is and will be. And to the mayor's point, the construction is incredibly important for the further growth of our community, but we can't forget about transit as well. If we don't understand the impacts of transit, especially to our people serving the resort corridor, and we need to make it very, very clear what will happen to transit if we're not funding it appropriately. So, that's, that's my hope, is to be very aggressive and be very transparent with our community about what happens if we don't have it here.
Thank you, and I'll just echo the comments of my colleagues here, and also just say, given that the governor and the legislature are considering bills like the A's Stadium Bill, which will require the county to chip in $25 million of its infrastructure funding, perhaps we need some cooperation in not asking and instead extending these types of revenue sources so that we can move forward instead of having the money taken away from us.
Thank you, Chairman. Well said. The next item, Agenda 55, is to receive information from our legal counsel. There are no items to discuss. We can move on to the final agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Thank you. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide comment with regards to matters before the Regional Transportation Commission, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Dennis Hennessy. You all know me. I'm here quite often. Couple things, just to touch base on Francis's presentation. I think it'd be, I agree with the Commissioner that stated that, let's have a monthly recap of how many instances, or how many times a driver was spit on, or substance drawn. It doesn't need to be broke down that, but there needs to be somewhere the public can see that, because I'm sure that the Formula One Committee and the Super Bowl Committee would really like to know how unsafe our buses are. Second comment I have is, I saw a news report, notice there's not 200 of us here today, and there's no news media here today. That doesn't mean they're not going to be here. We're giving you the chance to make changes. Mayor Goodman, you were very heartfelt at your statements last, last month. I appreciate that. The problem is, we're not getting any action. I, it was great to see the do's and don'ts, but you know what? There's more don'ts on there. We have a sophisticated camera system on these buses. Why does a security officer need to be present to take action? The comment that, that, that the security company enforces fair, that could be the biggest joke we heard here today. Even though it says fair enforcement, they do zero fair enforcement. The other stat that I saw on the news the other day, because I know the news media is not letting go of the security, was of all, and I forget the timeframe, I thought it was this, this year, but I'm not positive the timeframe, the numbers of responses that Metro has had to the RTC system, and it broke down to, they had to respond once every four hours to an RTC bus. You guys ought to be ashamed of that. Once every four hours, our local, don't say they're not cooperating with us, because they are. I know MJ's done a lot of things and got some great contacts within the police department, but maybe we should resource some other folks. Maybe we should reach out to Todd Fasulo at Win Encore and see what he did to change the culture and what their security system are at the Win Encore. But I don't, I don't have a lot of hope. Francis Julian's leaving, your new security guy's leaving. Now, we're right back in the hands of the people that were running your security that put us in this situation. Help us, please.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Sandra Adams, ATU 1637, Vice President. We sit here, we look at these videos and charts, and we see percentages from other states, other cities, and stuff like that. I don't care about those other cities or other states. I care about Las Vegas. I care about our drivers. It's not helping us. I don't, that doesn't matter to me. I want protection for our drivers, and we don't get it. I don't care, we can sit here and put stuff on monitors all day long. It's not helping. In the last couple of weeks, we've had drivers assaulted, spit on, and everything, and nothing is being done. Secondly, whenever route changes are done, I'm sure that's done by, or service change is done by RTC, okay, we got a transition going with a new company. You start a new service change on the same day, it's chaos, and you know who it affects? The drivers. Okay? We knew nothing about the bid. I just happened to be having a casual conversation with someone from TransEV, and she says, uh, bid. I said, bid? This was like on May 2nd. She said, yeah, and the, the cuts have to be at RTC by the 8th. I was like, June? She says, no, May. So, this is like six days from now. We were not included. We were never told about what was going to happen, or nothing like that. The packets are terrible. They're talking about making things convenient for the passengers and stuff like that. The drivers are never considered in anything. We're just out there, thrown to the wolves. I mean, they got some stuff on there. I mean, how is it better? We got a run where Jones is in a line with Maryland Parkway. How does that work for anybody? That's terrible. We got packets, 50 hours for five days. You got to work 50 hours. That's, that doesn't make any sense. That's terrible. We were just totally eliminated from everything, and I think it's, it's not fair. Our drivers are getting slapped in the face every way they turn, and nobody cares about us. It's always about the public, the public, the public. What about us? We work for you. We work for these contractors, and nobody has our back on anything. Something needs to be done to have our back. We meet, we come to you about these bids and packets and stuff, and it gets worse and worse. So, nobody's stepping up to the plate to talk to whoever's doing this. I mean, they're out evidently riding these routes in a car, but it's not the same as driving a bus. You know, they give you, I like, currently, right now, I have a bid where I have two minutes. I get there at 35, and I got to leave at 36. That's inhuman. We're not considered for anything, and that needs to change. We need some help somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Shelley Jones. I come every month. Once upon a year ago, I would ride the RTC buses, fixed routes, when I had a little bit of sight. Now, I ride paratransit because I have no sight. Doesn't matter, I'm still on the go. And the programs that were implemented, the RTC On Demand, which I like riding, and it's a great program, and there's a lot of RTC drivers who are great too. However, I do agree with the person that spoke last about security for the drivers. There's no reason why people should be slapped or spit upon. I mean, that's disgusting. Would you like it if you were spit or slapped? You need to do something to help the drivers. Yeah, the public sometimes have problems, but the drivers I see suffer a lot, and you should be ashamed of yourselves for not helping them. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and we are adjourned.